In order, would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
(laughing). I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no degree in justice for all.
May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Corman?
Here.
Ms. Witche?
Here.
Mr. Person?
Here.
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Mr. Bavoni?
Here.
Ms. Perez?
Here.
Mr. McIrvin?
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is a proclamation.
Proclamation, Renton Heart Month. Whereas heart disease continues to be the leading cause of death in the United States and affects men and women of every age and race, and whereas many people who have high blood pressure may go years without knowing it, which is why heart disease is called America's silent killer, and whereas the chance of developing coronary heart disease can be reduced by taking simple steps to prevent and control certain factors that put people at greater risk, and whereas the Renton Fire and Emergency Services Department supports its commitment to fighting heart disease by promoting preventative screenings and public education in many ways in many of the city's diverse communities throughout Renton, and whereas Renton Heart Month serves to increase public awareness of the importance of fighting cardiovascular disease by developing good eating habits, being physically active, and taking advantage of preventative screenings, and whereas being aware of the warning signs of a heart attack or stroke and knowing what to do may help save a life, all Renton citizens are encouraged to learn how to perform cardiopulmonary resuscitation and use an automatic external defibrillator. Now, therefore, I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim February 2016 to be Renton Heart Month, and I encourage all citizens to increase their awareness of cardiovascular disease detection and prevention by participating in this important community risk reduction campaign. In witness whereof, I have heretofore set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this 25th day of January 2016. Signed, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move the proclamation to be adopted as read.
Second.
Then moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Corman, that this proclamation be adopted as read. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Chief Peterson, are you here to receive this proclamation?
Thank you, members of the council, Mr. Mayor, for proclaiming February 2016 as Renton Heart Month. Renton Heart Month helps us fulfill our vision of working to make our community safer, healthier, and stronger. This helps us care for our community through education and early detection of the risk factors associated with heart disease and strokes. This year, we will be in 25 of the schools from Renton School District to Isipah and Kent, over 100 classrooms, and we'll be reaching out and screening over 3,000 students this year. We'll also be participating in the Go Red for Women event at McLendens and the Valley Medical Center's Glow Women's Health and Wellness Program. Throughout the years, our campaign have had several testimonials of people who have been identified and treated due to our Heart Month screenings. It's been a very, very successful program. But this wouldn't take place without our partners. And this year, Valley Medical Center, I have Dr. Michael Pravetti here as Stroke Director for Valley Medical. Renton School District, another partner that's very important, with Dr. Art Jarvis. And our newest partner is the Hope Heart Institute with Carrie Nass. I'm going to turn the podium over to them.
Mayor, members of the council, it's my pleasure to be here. As you know, I'm relatively new to the Renton community in these six months, but one of the themes that has been so apparent is partners, partners, partners. What a beautiful example this evening in this proclamation, but more beautiful is to watch the partnership that involves our young people and our staff. Involving the children not only sets that stage for young people to meet our firefighters, our responders, but for us, I'd like to point to Laura Widdes, our school nurse, and Laura was talking about the young people who have been identified as part of the screening, where there were medical issues that had not been identified. So, the lifesaving, the recruiting to the fire department, the ultimately, how do we make this the best world we can possibly make for our community? My deepest thanks and appreciation to the City of Renton, to our partners this evening, and throughout this project, for their assistance to our children, and we hope we can be good partners back. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jarvis, for being here.
Hello, Mayor and council members. It's an honor to be here as well. I'm actually a lifelong resident of Renton, and so it's wonderful to be able to share programs and resources right here in this community. I am Director of Prevention Programs with the Hope Heart Institute. We're a 57-year young nonprofit based in Bellevue, but we serve the whole entire Puget Sand region. The goal of our, and mission of our program is to reduce cardiovascular disease, and up to 70% of cardiovascular disease is preventable through diet, exercise, and behavior modification. So it's so important to start with our youth. They're near and dear to our heart. I almost brought my little five-year-old son from basketball, but he's stayed home. I said, "You'd have lots of stories to tell your friends tomorrow at school to meet the mayor," but he wanted to stay home. Yeah, I just can't thank you enough for declaring this and putting your effort and your stamp of approval on this important partnership. And we look forward to many years to come of incorporating our science and health curriculum, kits in the schools here, and we have different series that are all free due to our generous donors. So, look forward to many years and a lot of wellness in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mike Praviti. I'm, excuse me, a stroke neurologist and the medical director of the stroke program at Valley Medical Center. Thank you very much for letting me come here and for doing this for South King County. You know, I'm really proud to be the medical director of our program because amongst other accolades, we have the highest kudos from the American Heart Association, the Gold Plus, Target Honor Roll Elite Plus. And in English, that basically means that if you come to Valley with a stroke, more than 50% chance that we're going to get a drug in your vein in less than 45 minutes to try and make the stroke better, more than 75% chance in less than an hour. And while those numbers sound fantastic, about 90% of strokes never make it to the hospital fast enough to get treated. So, what you're doing with February and what you're doing with this program does a lot more than all the hard work that we do at Valley, if you can prevent strokes before they even happen. You know, stroke is the number-one cause of disability in the United States, and that means that, you know, your number-one chance of not being able to work or not being able to take care of yourself is because of a stroke. And some of the statistics coming out of King County are scary. You know, 85% of high school students in King County don't pass national fitness requirements. And 75% of people that live in King County are either overweight or obese. And there's a 12% rate of diabetes if you're African-American in King County, and that's third-highest out of all the U.S. counties. So, you know, we've got a lot of work to do, but this is a great step, and I just thank you very, very much for paying attention to what can make our community significantly stronger. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and council, I'd like to get a picture with our sponsors, with council on the back.
Okay.
No, 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 guys. They're doing this completely wrong. Move a little bit in front of me, honey. Yeah.
Do you need some?
Yep, thank you.
Do you want me to walk over? Thank you, Jojo, baby.
Do we need to move that?
We need to move it over, mate?
Yeah.
This is a new photo.
That used to be...
Forget it. You know, because they never wanted to be led by anybody. You guys, okay?
Okay, thank you very much. You know, in addition to thanking all of the partners that we have, I really want to give a lot of credit to our firefighters who have really embraced this program over a number of years, and we, every year, we continue to increase the number of people that were checking through this program, and they're very dedicated to this, so thank you guys very much for your work. Okay, we have a couple of special presentations. The first one is the K-9 Unit Funding Grant. I think we have some Rotarians here, don't we?
Yeah.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name's Norman McQueller, and I'm president of our Renton Rotary, and I'd like to introduce Laura Yuland, and she is our president-elect. We are here this evening, and thank you for the opportunity of being here, along with some of our fellow Rotarians in the audience, thanking them for coming down as well. We are here to make a special presentation to our police department. But for those that are unfamiliar with Rotary, I would just like to give some brief information about Rotary. Our organization is a leadership organization. We're made up of local businesses, professionals, and civic leaders. We meet regularly to get to know each other, form friendships, and through that, we're able to get great things done in our community. Rotary is here to positively impact the world and our community. Renton Rotary seeks to carry out that mission, along with 1.2 million other Rotarians, by serving in our community and our world. Rotary International is working to eradicate polio, provide clean drinking water, and sanitation for those who have none, and other humanitarian efforts. We join in those efforts and also serve right here and have since 1943. We provide nearly $50,000 in yearly grants to local nonprofits, give every third grader a dictionary, purchase warm coats for kids who otherwise wouldn't have one, among other great works that we do.
So I'd like to invite the Renton Police Department, Chief Malasovich, and anyone else who's coming up to receive the check, come on up here.
I'm going to volunteer if you don't.
Only the chief of police can cash a check, that's a...
We are so pleased to give this check to the Renton Police Department. I guess I should be changing this around so council can see it. Renton Rotary is honored to be a part of this. This grant was given to the Renton Police, who have been Roethlisberger Foundation, and is to purchase a canine, a red canine, for the city, $7,500, and Rotary is very honored to be a part of this. We want to say thank you to the council for this opportunity to present, but also thank you to the Renton Police Department, who also serve tirelessly to better our community every day. So we appreciate you, and we appreciate being a part of this opportunity.
Thank you, Laura and Norma. That's great. I guess so.
You got this one?
I can get this one.
Go ahead.
Okay, couple quick.
Thank you.
Just don't be blocking that doorway if me, I'll have to get out in a hurry.
For most of you, that name Ben Roethlisberger rings a bell. He's quarterback of the Pittsburgh Steelers. He has a foundation that donates a canine to every city where the Steelers play away games. And during the 2014 NFL season, the foundation distributed over $132,000 to law enforcement agencies across the U.S. This past season, the Steelers played an away game, which the Seahawks won, in Seattle. So the city of Seattle and surrounding communities were qualified to submit for this grant. So members of our Special Operations Division submitted the grant, along with several other local agencies. The Ben Roethlisberger Foundation can only distribute grants to qualified 501(c)(3) organizations, so that's why we elicited the assistance of Renton Rotary to assist us in this process. The majority of the grants are for canines, for the purchase of dogs and dog safety vests, but other grants are considered also. They have never funded an undercover narcotic detection dog, and they were particularly interested in our application, as that is the first undercover canine unit they funded. We have selected a dog a couple of weeks ago, and currently, they're doing some preliminary training with the Department of Corrections. We've identified a handler, it's Officer Megan Ashbaugh, who's going to be working with the dog. And the training lasts about six weeks, and they'll be back to the city to do some work, hopefully by March. So on behalf of the department, I'd like to thank both the Ben Roethlisberger Foundation and Renton Rotary for reinstituting our narcotic canine program.
That's great. Thank you very much, Chief. Next special presentation is from the Renton Municipal Arts Commission, has a very special award to present.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, it gives me great pleasure to be able to present this award. Let me get in character and see if I can do this correctly. The Bravo Award is presented by the Renton Municipal Arts Commission to an outstanding member of the community who has contributed significantly to the goal of raising awareness of the arts in Renton. This award is being presented to Jerris English. Jerris has made, she's a writer for the, I'm losing character again. Jay, help me out here. Jerris is a writer whose column, The Creative Side, runs monthly in the Renton Reporter. She has worked with the Valley community players and served as a board member and two years as president of Allied Arts of Renton. She has also been a member of the Renton Arts Commission and has worked tirelessly to significantly further the goal of raising awareness and accessibility of the arts in the Renton community. To this award, and all those who came to see Jerris receive this award, will you please stand? I just want to show you the type of support that she has in the arts community here in Renton. And this is fantastic, and I'm sure this isn't everybody, but I'd like to present this award to Jerris, and we say bravo, from the Renton Municipal Arts Commission and all the arts commissioners that are here. Please stand with me, and the audience also stand with me in recognizing Jerris English with this first bravo award for 2016. Jerris. I think at this point, it would be fitting to ask you guys to come down again and let's get this photo out moment.
I am just so honored. I mean, this is just amazing. Really appreciate it, but also, there are so many wonderful people in our community that are so dedicated, artistic and creative, and have done so much to promote the arts in the area, so I thank all of those people, too.
Thank you very much, and congratulations. Okay, well, that was all the fun stuff for the evening. Now, we're going to go to a public hearing.
Well, I'd like to think mine is fun, too, but maybe a different level of fun. Good evening. My name is Amanda Asker, and I work in the Economic and Development Group for Property Services, and I'm here today to do a public hearing for a street vacation, also known as 200 Mill Street. I'm assuming you guys, I guess I could, I'm assuming you know where the 200 Mill Street is, is that used to be the old city hall, and on your screen, you'll see where the right-of-way is that's currently there. It's also known as Second Avenue or Second Street. We received a petition on November 12th from Peter Renner in the Facilities Department about vacating the street, and since we are the owner, majority owner, we have all the abutting owners for the petition. The right-of-way was originally dedicated on a plot in 1876, replatted in 1957, so it's been around a while. In the right-of-way, there's a lot of city-owned utilities and other utilities. So the right-of-way is currently, as you saw the picture, is in parking lots, under property improvements, and also underneath the building. So the vacation will allow for the parcels to be reconfigured, so that way, that the improvements will be on actual parcels of land that meet their improvements. The vacation was circulated to the various city departments and outside agencies. No objections were to the vacation, but there were some several requests for easements, so I'll go through those. Surface Water Utility requested an easement, and also Water Utility requested a meter to be located in Mill Avenue, so those two can be shown on the screen as well. And then Comcast requested an easement over their existing line, and to date, nobody else has any comments. So there's our little wiggly line running through the building. So our recommendation from Community and Economic Development would be to secure the necessary easements when we're doing a boundary line adjustment to revise the property lines. At the time, we could secure the easements and also deal with the water irrigation valve at that time, when we understand further what we're doing with the project. So if this is approved, we would place this on the ordinance, or place the ordinance for the first reading on the next agenda. I said that way too fast. That was all I had.
Okay. Thank you, Amanda. Any questions from council? Okay, this is a public hearing. Was there anybody who wanted to testify on this street vacation? Hearing done, a little wish of the council?
Move the public hearing be closed?
Second.
Then moved by Mr. Corman, seconded by Mr. Bavoni, that the public hearing be closed. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
I move that we place the ordinance to vacate the right-of-way for first reading on next week's agenda.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Corman, seconded by Mr. Bavoni, that an ordinance be placed on next week's agenda for vacating this street. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amanda. Okay, next is administrative report, Mr. Covington.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council, a couple of items, and then, if you're willing, I'll come down and we'll have pictures taken.
We could do that.
I just have three items. Want to let you know, we continue to do improvements and so partial closures on Main between Second and Third. Tonight in particular, we're doing some, hopefully some street patching and repairs, so we're down to one lane tonight on both Third and Main, but that'll be reopened to the two lanes in the morning. That work will continue as they continue to construct the building there on Main and Second. South 156th Street, 156th Avenue Southeast, excuse me, between 144th and 6th, that's a continued partial closure through this week, and Logan Avenue continues to be closed. Those are the only items that I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Covington. Moving on to audience comment, we have a couple of people who signed up to address the council. When I call your name, please come to the podium, give your name and city of residence for the record, and you have five minutes. We have a timer right next to the city clerk. And first is Bonnie Washington.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. Thank you for letting me speak, and I'm going to get this done in five minutes or shorter because I get long-winded and I'm nervous.
Okay. Don't be nervous, we're friendly.
Okay. Here's my problem. I'm working in the South King County area. I drive for Metro, and very quickly, I was assaulted on my job, on the bus, right there in front of Freddy's at the Zone, and it took 26 minutes for an officer or anybody to respond, except the fire department. They were there on, jolly on the spot and took care of me. The thing is, I got a case number, and my deputy, Treadway, he's been very nice to me, but I haven't heard anything else back about this. I saw the young lady who assaulted me after this happened, and I wasn't in the right state of mind, but I controlled myself. So when I called Officer Treadway that Monday, the following day after that Sunday, he told me that the detectives were not going to pursue because they said the audio, no, the visual from Freddy's wasn't, you know, decent enough to see what she looked like, but I have a video from King County. You can see her, hear her, and everything, and I'd like to know, how do I go about getting some help to pursue this, or am I in the wrong place to ask this?
No, you're in the right place, and we have a police commander right in the back of the room who will be happy to help you right now.
I want to say thank you so much, and I do like Renton, even though I didn't do it right. I'm Bonnie Washington, and I live in unincorporated Seattle.
Well, we appreciate your service and sorry you had that incident in front of Freddy's.
Thank you.
Next, oh, yes, Mr. Person.
Could you look into the fact that it took the police department 26 minutes to get there?
I sure will. Yeah. Okay, next is Alicia Zapata.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you for inviting me here to speak upon this. I had recently, on Thursday, January 14th, was working at Walgreens, just right here in the city of Renton, and as I got off work at 11:30, a unknown gentleman, unknown to me, had jumped into my car, and I was extremely distraught over this. So my manager took it upon himself to call the police and have the police come out. They sent out three officers to come out, and in the meantime, the gentleman was still there on the property. The police department, the three officers, which I have their names, spoke to the gentleman that had jumped in my car, and they sent my manager inside Walgreens and asked me to come out and speak and give a statement, but they wanted me to give a statement in front of him. And I just feel that I was not in the position or in the right state of mind to give a statement with him standing right there. And with three officers attending this, I feel that at least one could have came inside Walgreens to take my statement. So in the meantime, when I went down to the records department to try and get a copy of the report, I find out that because they didn't get a statement from me, a report was never filed. I was given a number, which I was, to believe, was a case number, but it was an incident number. So I'm really distraught over this. I have a hard time going to sleep because I see this gentleman's face every time I go to sleep, and I just feel like I wasn't protected, or I wasn't given the opportunity to give my side of the story and everything, and I just wish that something would be done.
Okay. Thank you for taking the time to come down here, and I've got your information here, and what we will do is, I will pass this along to our police command staff and the chief's office.
And I have an incident number and the three officers that actually responded.
If you could provide that to Jay right here at the end, that would be very helpful. And then we will be back in touch with you.
Okay, thank you.
And council, we'll be back in touch with you on both of these cases. Next is Jolene Stack. Did I pronounce that right, Jolene? Okay. Okay.
I just want to say that after my last meeting here, I want to thank you. You have up the patrol around Fred Meyer's and Walgreens, but we're still having problems with weirdos and wackos and, you know. But you have stepped up to the plate. And the other thing I wanted to talk to you, I want to talk off-record to you about. So, that's about all I wanted to say was...
Okay.
At least you stepped up, and the police are patrolling around Fred Meyer's and Walgreens. And because it's getting to be a real problem down there.
Well, thank you very much for the feedback, and absolutely call my office anytime.
Okay, and I'll talk to you after the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to consent agenda. We have 11 items, but council, I understand there's some discussion needed and more information needed on item F. So, I'm pulling that item.
Okay.
And somebody can refer that if you choose to. So, we have 10 other items for your consent this evening. Are there any items that council members would like pulled for discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Hearing none, I move approval of the consent agenda minus item F.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that council approve the consent agenda minus item F. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
I would move that the recommendation by Community and Economic Development Department regarding the lodging tax funding for 2016 be put in Committee of the Whole for further deliberation.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, seconded by Mr. Person, that item F, which addresses the 2016 lodging tax funding allocations, be referred to the Committee of the Whole. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, unfinished business, Mr. Corman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have one committee report to present from the Committee of the Whole. Okay, Committee of the Whole Committee Report. Ordinance requiring the reconstruction and realignment of Sunset Lane Northeast, along with realignment, oversizing, and addition of necessary utilities. The Committee of the Whole recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the ordinance requiring the realignment and reconstruction of Sunset Lane Northeast, along with the realignment, oversizing, and addition of necessary utilities. This is signed by the council president. Move the council approve the committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, seconded by Mr. Pavoni. The council concur with the Committee of the Whole report. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
And that's all, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, thanks. Ms. Witche?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Person.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have two finance committee reports.
Okay, first finance committee report is approval of claims and payroll vouchers. The finance committee approves for payment on January 25th, 2016. Claims vouchers 344259 through 344626, four wire transfers, and one payroll run with benefit withholding payments, totaling $6,278,866.27. And payroll vouchers including 747 direct deposits and 34 payroll checks totaling $1,640,642.74. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move the council concur in the recommendation of the finance committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that council concur with the finance committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
The next report is regarding a utility bill waiver adjustment. The finance committee concurs with staff recommendation denying the waiver of back charges for water and sewer utilities at the service address 3018 Awaco Avenue Northeast. The original water and sewer connections were unauthorized by the city, and the property received both water and sewer services November 2008 through November 2015 without the city's knowledge. There is no city code, city policy, or state statute that allows provisions for utility waivers under these circumstances. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move the council concur with the recommendation of the finance committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that council concur with the finance committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, Mr. Prince.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Pavoni?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Perez?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and Mr. McIrvin?
And no unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to resolutions and ordinances. We have one ordinance for first reading.
This ordinance is regarding the Sunset Lane realignment. An ordinance is the city of Renton, Washington, requiring the reconstruction and realignment of Sunset Lane Northeast as a prerequisite for further property development in the Sunset revitalization area, along with the realignment, oversizing, and addition of necessary utilities. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
I move this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that this ordinance be placed in second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Thanks, Jason. Moving on to new business, Mr. Corman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Sure that this is... Okay. So, I guess all I need to announce is Committee of the Whole meeting on February 1st, 2016. That's a Monday, 5:30 p.m. We'll have a Committee of the Whole in the conferencing center. Two items on that agenda. The first item is solid waste response to request for proposal for services. And the second item is economic development update. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Witche?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on Thursday, January 28th, at 4:00 p.m. in the council conference room, there will be a Community Services Committee meeting. The topic on the agenda is a Renton Municipal Arts Committee Commission appointment of Samantha Getz Granquist.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Person?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Prince?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we've got a Planning and Development Committee meeting scheduled for January 28th, 2016, at 3:00 p.m. in the council conference room. We have two items on the agenda. Docket 11 briefing and emerging issues in planning and development. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Pavoni?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Perez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On February 1st, 2016, on Monday, at 4:30 p.m., we will have Transportation Committee in the council conference room. There are two items in the agenda. First is the PFLI Aviation Operation Permit and Agreement, and the second will be emergency issues in transportation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McIrvin?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. On February 1st, at 3:30 p.m. in the council conference room, there will be a Utilities Committee. Three items on the agenda include the Lower Cedar River Restoration Agreement briefing, Cedar River Maintenance Dredge Project briefing, and Establishment of the 165th Street Sanitary Sewer Extension Special Assessment District, number 48. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, audience comment. Was there anybody that didn't have a chance to address the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I just noticed in my calendar that on Thursday, February 5th, there is a... Public Works has its annual chili cook-off contest at the city shops. And there will be five council people present, but no business will be transacted.
Okay.
And it's just so everybody knows, if they see five of us together, we're just judging chili.
That's right.
And some really good chili, by the way.
It'll be no city action taken.
Maybe action later.
Thanks, Mr. Person. What's a wish of the council?
Move we adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Mr. Corman,